All right, this is the Finance Budget Audit and Claims Committee for April 22nd, our regular meeting. And I'll first start with the tax budget from the Auditor's Office.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gerton. Each July, the tax budget is typically around the middle of the month. This year is July 15th. And so doing some counting back for meetings, we have one meeting in July, July the 8th, and then we have two in June. So, so the goal is to have three readings, one in June, you know, first meeting in June, and second meeting in June, and then the third reading in July. So what we'd like to do, and moving forward in my office, we would like to bring items like this to the Finance Committee, so we can work through these together. As I know many times there, you may get something at the last minute and haven't had time to fully digest it. So we're trying to avoid that. So here's a case in point. So this evening, what we thought we'd do is talk a little bit about the, about the process. So, and I think I left that note about the tax budget on your desk. I should have brought that with me. Anyway, tonight, we'll go over a little bit, kind of a preliminary. I did send you the tax budget from last year for you to review, okay? That's going to take a little bit. You should have got that in an email. So what, what we want to do is we are waiting for a packet from the Hammond County Auditor, which Mary reached out again today. So we should have that here soon, I would imagine. And that's going to be the, the beginning of this process. So what I would like to ask the Finance Committee, you know, we can bring this here. We want, obviously, we want to talk about it at the, at the Finance Committee meetings. But just if it would be something that perhaps two of you would be interested in, and coming to the Auditor's Office when Mary and I are starting to work on this, to be in the, to work on this from the very beginning. So, and then hopefully you could see the process, and that would answer some questions. And then moving forward, we would like to do this with as many items as we possibly can. So I don't know if Mr. Mr. Gerton, if you would like to do that, or, or pick someone else, because I know we only have two. But I think that is something that, that we would like to ask, if Finance Committee would like to do that. That was kind of the first question.
It sounds totally reasonable to me, and I think I would appreciate being there. My education as Finance Committee Chair, is there anybody else who would want to join in on that?
I'd be happy to join. I would definitely keep, would love to keep learning, especially since I've kind of started learning more in the past couple of months. But, you know, if there's a month that I can't come, or I'm not able to, I figure someone else can also join. We can kind of discuss that on a month-by-month basis, maybe.
Okay.
Just in case something, something comes up.
Mr. Gerton, you have any interest in attending?
I don't, I don't mind to attend. I mean, if somebody else wants to, I'm, I'm okay with that. But if, if there's an opening, I'll, I don't mind at all.
Okay. I will assume Ms. Franzen will be there, and if she can't be there, we will contact you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, I think our intention in here is, in the spirit of collaboration and transparency, we could start together, and then we'll bring that work product here, right? So then we can go over what, what we've done. So we'll have probably, you know, the entire, entire month of May. If we have to have more than one Finance Committee meeting, I don't see why, why we couldn't do that. But the, our intention is the first, the first reading, we'll have it complete, and we'll all have complete understanding of how that was produced, and hopefully answer all, all questions. Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to take notes.
No, go right ahead, go ahead. So that's, that's what we would like to do. And not only with the tax budget, but anything else that we, we feel that that would improve the collaboration and transparency with. And so like I said, Mary had reached out today for the, we, we do, we do get a packet from them, so we're kind of asking that they expedite that process. We can get started maybe a little sooner than typically get started. So once we receive that, we'll let you know. We'll send you an email. And then we'll set up, we'll set up a date, and then we'll just meet in the Auditor's Office there, and we'll get started. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
And may I ask, you know, there are, in the universe of, let's say, financial documents and budgets that are put together on an annual basis, is this the number-one document? Are there others? How should I kind of think about?
Well, I would say this is pretty, pretty near the top. We have to, we have to have this submitted to the Hammond County Auditor, and it has to be reviewed and approved by the Budget Commission, which is the Treasurer, the Auditor, and the Prosecuting Attorney, which I'm not sure how the last one fits in, but that's the way it is.
Yeah, I think actually this year they're changing it so that it's not going to be the prosecuting attorney. It's going to be the President of the Commission.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
So yeah, but I agree. No, funny. They probably thought the same thing.
Yeah, I read that, and I was like, hmm, okay. But yeah, so that's, and then that's, it's important for us to get that and get that approved, because that, that pretty much is our, you know, approval of our funding for, for the year. So yeah, right up there at the top.
Okay, and that's true.
Absolutely.
And, and the way it was explained to me when I went up, because one of the sessions I, for the local government conference, was on, was on budgeting. So the way they described it, mostly for new fiscal officers, I think, is that it's like the first step in the process. So you're, you're getting about half a year's worth of information. So we're trying, we're starting, it's essentially starting the budgeting process for 2026. So it's going to be a lot of preliminary numbers. But then, so once the county reviews and makes any adjustments, if they do, we'll get their response somewhere in August or early September. And then based on that, that's when we'll start reaching out to the department saying, okay, this is what the county wants us to use to create next year's budget. And then, once the departments start creating their budgets, then we get to the end of the year, and we have one final correction, because now we have actual information. So for the tax budgets, it's only half years and estimates, and then as we move through the process. So by, by the end of the year, we'll have good numbers. But it does help, I think, make people work on stuff well in advance.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly...
And, and things are expected to change. I mean, you're, when we create a tax budget, we know the numbers are going to change. It's just doing our best, guess at the time.
Yeah. I'm sorry, because if I remember correctly, the, the steps outlined on that, essentially inside sheet of the Financial Recovery Plan, I think you had said before that it, it was almost the, thank you, sir. Yeah, so the, the format for appropriations, the city auditor shall update estimated revenue projection included in the rolling five-year forecast. No later than September 1st, every year, the city remains in fiscal emergency. It starts the budget process. So is, is this that step, or is this a precursor to that step?
Precursor.
Okay, so it's sort of, if this is a...
Because this, that's not even have, this is, even if we weren't in fiscal emergency, this is what our process would be doing. I think we have an extra step, because we are in fiscal emergency. Yeah, so this is just the preliminary step for everybody across the state.
Got it. And, and I think we, just to step in here, we have our numbers, and we submit them to Hamilton County, and then they in turn come back at us, and give us their numbers.
Yeah, and they'll say whether or not we've got good numbers.
So we're beholden to them, waiting on them to actually finalize this document. Right.
And then once they finalize it, then we can move on with the departments.
Thank you. So that was everything on the, the tax review, just for this evening. So it was kind of like a preliminary discussion, and give you where we are, and what we want to get your feel of how, how involved we want, wanted you to be in this. So, so when we do get the application package, we'll let you know, and then we'll get started quickly.
Sounds good.
Is that everything, is that everything I had? Was that, was that my time for...
I think that was...
That's all that's on the agenda.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll cover some more during the administrative report.
Okay. Well, we have room for standing reports next, so you and Mr. Bonzel could go next.
Well, I'll, Mr. Bonzel is taking.
We'll turn over to the Tax Department then.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, I'd love to have Tim Wagers, our city's Tax Commissioner, come up to kind of give a little bit of a summary on it, just initial, where we are initially with the tax season.
Yeah, thank you. Just some preliminary, preliminary numbers for April after tax week last week. So I just wanted to, to share some of those numbers with you. We are kind of minimally staffed. We're looking on correcting that at the moment in time. But the, the, the numbers look really good. So we, in the, in the last three weeks, so this is from April 1st to April 22nd, and I don't mind to share this information with you guys via email if you'd like to receive it. It's, it's not much there, but definitely if you, if you'd like it. So we added 354 new accounts. So this is accounts that previously did not exist inside our tax software. So these are brand-new taxpayers. Out of those 354 accounts, I'm not really sure what the exact metric is, but we do know that a lot of them are coming from Factory 52. And we are starting to learn that there's a good amount of individuals over there that are actually work-from-home employees. So we are being able to kind of correct their withholdings and/or work with them and estimated payments and stuff like that to, to keep them on track. So that's kind of nice to see. The postcards that Mr. Bonzel put together have a huge result. So they, they had a pretty decent result last year. It seems that they're having an even better result this year, given the volume that we received over the, you know, kind of the last week and a half or last two weeks. We, we've, out of those, you know, with our existing, as well as the, the new folks that came on board, we've processed and completed 1,511 returns so far. That 1,511, that is just final tax return. So those, that is just returns only. That is not relevant to any quarterly payment and/or withholding payment that would have came in. So in the last, in the last three weeks or so, we've done just over 3,000. It's 3,320 transactions for about 1.8 million. Numbers are still, it's, April is a kind of a hard one. That's the reason why we didn't bring you a, a report similar to, to what you're looking at there with the preliminary numbers for April. It's going to look kind of low at this point in time. However, at the end of April, we received some quarterly payments for most of these. We have some larger companies that send out like bonuses and stuff like that in the first quarter. I'm not really sure the logic behind that, but that's kind of the way that it happens. So generally, at the end of that first quarter, we do see larger quarterly withholdings come in. So we'll, we expect that all the way up until the very last day of the month. That's when it's actually due, is on the last day of the month. So most of, most of our businesses and our payroll processors are very good about getting that in on time. So we do our best to make sure that it is applied, and that way it can be referenced back in years to come, or next year, for instance, to kind of give you that consistency for month-to-month revenues. And it just kind of keeps that way across the board. And then that way, you don't see, you know, us 40% up in, in April, whenever it was just a simple day of when it was actually put into the, to the system there. So we've, we've sent out 219 letters. Some of these letters are going to be letters expressing that folks need to pay the bill. Some of them are going to be for missing information. It really just kind of depends. That's a case-by-case basis. And then as most of you, or as you all know, we've, we brought in e-file. So e-file actually began in 2022, that first year. I don't think, I guess we consider it a success. But that first year, we had about 46 filers that actually filed through the e-file this year so far. We do still have people that are being registered, and they are still performing some of the e-file requirements and stuff like that. But as of, as of today, we had 566 e-files filed. So that's nice. Right now, our, our system represents about 23,000 taxpayers. That's going to, that, that number is kind of wishy-washy, because there's some businesses that don't necessarily have annual contributions to us and/or do not perform or sell services inside the city of Norwood. So that number does kind of fluctuate there. But, so we had, we had 782 people connect. That means they've actually signed into the e-file site. So out of that 782, 566 completed their return. Out of that 566, 324 of them actually made payments through the e-file system. The 782 number is going to be, once again, back to a case-by-case basis. We had some individuals that were finding it troublesome to prorate their income through the e-file site. And then we also had some individuals that have multiple withholdings from different municipalities. So some of our, our service folks, the landscapers, the plumbers, the electricians, for instance, like that, they, you know, generally they're withheld. It could be 10-plus, 15-plus municipalities. So unfortunately, our e-file system does not allow them to enter more than two withholdings for one income. So one income, they will give you a workplace withholding, and then a resident withholding. Other than that, it kind of brings it back to paper. So we, we've seen a lot of those individuals just bring their stuff into the office, and then we handle it in-house. Easier for us, easier for them in, in that manner. Out, let's see here, where am I at? So they've had, out of the 566 that were filed, there was 1,203 files uploaded. That's going to be their supporting documentation. That's one of the things that we find the hardest in the Tax Department, is to ensure that everybody brings in the proper documentation with their return. So majority of, I believe, our postage that we, we spend is generally sending out letters for missing forms, despite it being on the form and on the postcard and everything like that. So I mean, the, the information is there for those that choose to, to look for it. However, you know, this, this is what it is. So we always make sure that we send back out for the proper documentation to, really, it, it goes both ways. So we get to not only ensure that we're taxing everything that we are supposed to, but then we are also ensuring that residents are not paying taxes on income that they should not be, or are not taxed, at least as far as the city ordinance is concerned. So as Norwood, as far as Norwood is concerned, we taxed earned income. That's the, the, kind of the reasoning behind the department name. We are actually the Earned Income Tax Department. So we tax earned income versus non-earned income. So that takes out capital gains, passive income, some, quite a bit of the subsidized income, workman's comp, unemployment compensation, as well as like third-party sick pay. So we, we take those off of the list. But there is a good amount of individuals that still, it's, they still come through, and they still try to pay taxes on that income. So there was, there was an individual just yesterday that was taxing himself on $14,000 worth of unemployment income. So we, we corrected him, and, you know, ultimately, you know, it saved him quite a few hundred bucks. So that's nice. And then it also gives us the opportunity to ensure that you are receiving credit for the taxes paid elsewhere. One thing that Norwood does that not a lot of the municipalities surrounding is we give county credits for the individuals that work in Kentucky, which is, it, it makes it a little bit more challenging for us to find out what is actually due. Kentucky's taxing system is vastly different than ours. But we, we give them the, the county credits, as well as the city credits that are paid there, really just doing anything we can to, you know, make sure that the taxpayers are, I don't want to say coming out ahead, but only paying what is due. And I think that is about it. Do you all have any questions?
Regarding the county tax in Kentucky, I am one of those people from NKU that pays weird things, and Ava really helped me out, so I appreciate that.
Yes, so there's, there's quite a bit. And so like Boone County, for instance, has Boone County Mental Health, which has got a maximum withholding of $25. They don't, it doesn't create its own line item in the bottom of the W2. It's kind of up in the awkward box there where the 12 and the 14 are. But, you know, regardless of where they put it at, it's something that the Tax Department catches, but not a lot of the taxpayers do. So the, similar to Campbell County, Campbell County has credit maxes. So they, they go off of a FICA limit, which I'm not sure what it, I think 147,000 or something like that. So they only tax to a certain amount of income, and then it just stops. However, whenever it comes back to us, we have to divide that income out to make sure that we can give proper credit for the taxes paid, and then see what is remaining or leftover that may be due to Norwood.
Oh, I do have a question, just for the sake of the order. The e-file charge that residents are charged just for using e-file, where does that money go?
So that is a 3.5% service fee that is done by the payment processor. So it, it's actually not affiliated with the e-file system. They, they have some sort of like coding. I'm, I'm not a computer guy, so I don't really know like the proper terminology for that. But there's some coding on there that if you pay through them, it helps us automate the process to applying it to your account. However, that 3.5% is, we, we, Norwood never receives that money. That is, that is pulled off of the top and remitted directly to the payment processor prior to us receiving the deposit.
Yeah.
That's what I had heard and from previous years, and just wanted to clarify that again.
Yeah, and that's, I, I've seen that, like, the state of Ohio taxes a similar thing. If you're paying by credit card for your property taxes, for instance, it charges you a, a percent as well. So it's just kind of a standard thing, from what I've seen for government processing.
Yeah, charge card.
Charge cards, yes.
Credit, credit card and debit cards, gift cards, whatever you choose to pay on, that, that same percentage would apply. Similar to the Water Department, the Water Department has a 2.75% fee, and that is done by their payment processor, who happens to be different for the same reason. So that, that payment processor is able to automate into their system to where ours is not.
Yeah, and I'll just kind of, just another note on that. So yeah, there was, there's four payment processes that we could have chosen to do the, to integrate into MITs to allow that. And the payment process that we're using, there's zero other fees the city has charged. Like, we even have, like, you know, for any way that we take payments through this process, there, we don't pay a terminal fee, we don't pay any other fees. Whereas before, if we were to truly add up, like, the amount that the city pays for the fees for the, that they charge us, plus the, you know, the remittance fees. I mean, it was 5%, 6%, 7% sometimes in a month. So that's where we are there. Another thing is the ACH payments. Unfortunately, like, I've asked about that. I don't know, basically being able to pay like with a bank account. There's a lot of places, if you pay at the bank account, you have less fees. Bridge payment and/or MITs, like, they don't, they're not able to integrate that right now. So if we ever do look for a different income tax processor, like, when we do, we definitely are going to look for like the ability for people to do that. So hopefully they don't have to pay as many fees. But if they wanted, everybody can always choose. They can file their taxes online, and then they can mail us a check too, right, if they want to. So.
Correct.
A bit more inconvenient, but, you know, if somebody has a bigger portion that they need to pay, like...
We, we also allow them to, to make drop-offs into the Water Department's Dropbox right out on Elm Street. So as long as there's an envelope addressed to the Tax Department, it'll make it to us. And that kind of gives people the availability to still do them kind of things after hours.
Yeah, great.
So, and then the reason, we kind of, we, we shifted from our, our previous payment processor because of those rates. So the city was going to be looking at it roughly between 4.5% and 6% rates, depending on when we remitted what was owed. So if we were going to pay daily, they, they would have it down as low as 4.5%. If we were going to remain on a monthly remittance schedule, then it was going to be upwards of 6%. That's kind of what initiated the, the searching out for a new payment processor.
But, I think we appreciate that.
Oh, sure. First of all, I just want to thank you for, obviously, the, the encouraging returns here. You know, plus 26% on individual in Q1, plus 204 on net profit, and plus 6.5 on withholding. So, you know, obviously, you guys are doing a great job, and, and thank you for that. Just as far as what I'll call, let's say, like retention of taxpayers, something that I was wondering about, because I know when I log in, I, I log in with my social security number, and then there's a PIN that I type in. I'm not readily sure if through the process, my, like, email is collected in such a way that, you know, whatever you said, I think it was 700 and some people filed through that software this year. So that in, you know, in three months, can you send a reminder to those people about their Q2 payment? You know, next April, can you send them a reminder via email?
That, that would be lovely if we could do that. Unfortunately, no, we, we do not have that ability yet.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure if MITs has that in their plans. Like I said, that would be lovely. But we do send out remittance coupons for our second and third and fourth quarters.
Okay.
So it'll be something that's come through letter mail.
Got it. Okay. So, you know, potential for minor savings there. You don't know if that's, if you ever get a rep, if you get their ear, maybe that's like a product roadmap kind of thing you guys could ask for. The second thing that I'll bring up is just a, a letter that I got from a resident on Cameron Avenue. And I, I thought they had a, you know, an interesting point, which was basically saying, I'm 74 years old, I'm handicapped, the last time I worked was 2018. I've lived in the same place for 29, 30 years, whatever. I got this, this postcard, and, you know, I, I have to file, you know, that kind of thing. And I, I think on one hand, their, their point was, you know, is there some way that the city could track individuals with similar circumstances, we'll say, who are retired, handicapped, et cetera, et cetera? Sorry, just, just a moment. In, in such that they wouldn't need to receive it? And then later, they made a sort of secondary point of that, that longtime residents might, might know this, might be in the habit, et cetera, and that, you know, could you segment it to properties with rental permits where you're targeting renters versus like long-time homeowners you would not target with this postcard? Would that be a way to save some incremental? I, I guess on a, on a per household, you're probably making a tremendous quote-unquote profit on, you know, a 90 cent, you know, print and, and stamp. But all the same, I thought, I thought it was an interesting point. If there was some number of houses that might be able to be taken off for one reason or another.
Loaded question.
Sure.
First part of that question is, we, we've gotten that a lot. I've conferred with, with Mr. Bonzel on, you know, some of the, the ways we may go about that. There's not going to be, as of right now, just the way that Norwood stands in ordinance, we are a mandatory filing city. So we, we have kind of, I don't, I don't want to say we went out of our way, but we've definitely tried to go above and beyond for our seniors and, and help them with this process. We did the Senior Day Tax Event with lunch provided by us for them to come out specifically in a little bit more of a relaxed environment to where, you know, the, the handicapped folks are going to be able to have a place to sit down versus standing in the atrium inside of the City Hall to, to file their taxes. We've also done a number of senior citizens and retirees specifically through letter mail. So we, we filed a, we filed a return for them, we send it back, they sign the return, and they remit the supporting documentation with that. That is kind of how we've been able to, to help out the people that are a little less mobile. But as far as, you know, them not having a file, a filing requirement, unfortunately, that's going to take a change of ordinance, which could be quite cumbersome. You know, we had discussed looking at, you know, if you go on, you know, maybe a certain number of years without taxable income. You know, we had discussed looking at, you know, if you go on, you know, maybe a certain number of years without taxable income, and you are over a certain age, that we would remove the requirement for you to file. Like I said, because of the ordinance, we we are still kind of mandated to to go after everybody to to file their taxes, regardless of taxes due. Like I said, we do understand that some people are a little less mobile, and and we've definitely tried our best to accommodate those folks. It doesn't always work. We can't, we can't do something that's blanketed. We can't say, hey, if you're, you know, 67 or older, you no longer have to file taxes. You know, we do see a good amount of the seniors in the community that have rental properties and stuff like that. So they they do have taxable income. You know, even if it does still fall below the standard deduction of of what the IRS says. And then as far as the postcards are are concerned, so those are actually set up on mailing routes. So we don't, we don't identify them to a person. If they're more or less identified to an address inside the city. And we have found that to be significantly cheaper. So that was more of a budget-conservative option. We'd be looking at probably double the costs if we were to just assign a name to those same postcards.
So so in this hypothetical scenario, where we go from every mailbox in the city to a, let's say, targeted maintained list, the hypothetical cost savings of taking certain people off would be negated by the fact, by the burden of, let's say, assigning an address, maintaining a list, customizing that versus just every address. So it would basically be offset. So there's, short of just disbanding your postcard program, there's not necessarily a cost savings to be had.
Correct. Yeah, so we get to, we get to utilize something called market mail whenever, whenever we don't have it addressed to a specific resident. So as soon as something becomes addressed to a specific person, then it is no longer, it no longer fits the, the, I guess, the requirement of marketing mail there. So we, in in doing so, it takes postage down from like 69 cents to like 26 cents, which is actually where we see majority of that savings.
Right. And that was kind of my point on the the ROI of it is, you spend, you know, 26 cents, and you get whatever kind of uptake on filing and payment. It's just like kind of a no-brainer in the grand scheme.
Yes.
Yeah, and another, yeah, and I would just note to that resident, like, I mean, even, yeah, even if first, you know, that tax ordinance were to change, you know, it's likely we'd still be sending those those letters out. I mean, maybe they'd be phrased this a different way. But, yeah, just make sure they emphasize that everybody gets it. It's not a, it's nothing personal to them. It's just reminding, it's just a reminder of the tax deadline. And some people may not like if, yeah, so that's basically that.
John, if you, if you'd like, you can, you can forward me that email, and and we can, we can go with them and and make accommodations.
Thank you.
I have found our Tax Department has great customer service, so I appreciate when there's a question like this, when you come in, you get good service.
Yes.
Yeah, we do our best to try to accommodate everybody.
Anything else, Mr. Wagers?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bonzel, anything else from the Treasurer's Office?
We're good. Thank you so much.
Standing report stuff from the Auditor's Office? Stuff meaning very important.
Very important stuff. Thank you, Mr. Garden, too. Just a review, some updates. As we had discussed at our last meeting, we did, we completed the draft of the retention schedule for the Auditor's Office. Mary has made some additions to that. The Records Retention Commission meeting was scheduled for 4/14. That had been pushed back to May 5th or 6th. So we're anxious to get that meeting on the books. Also, let's see, we did receive some additional information from Paylocity. I believe that was today. Yesterday, today, that we were waiting on. So we're going to meet with Mr. Wagers and and with Lori, Mary and myself. Also, we've started weekly meetings with the Safety Service Director, Mary and I. And also, we're, we're working on a shared folder for policy and procedure updates with the department heads. So we should, we should see that. Mary completed the semi-annual property tax settlement, which was due April 30th, so we're, we're on schedule with that. And also completed the quarterly unemployment and multiple worksite report. That's for the Department of Labor. That's also due May the 30th. So those are complete as well. So we're on track. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
I look forward to learning more about stuff when we meet for about the tax budget.
All right, we have
Actually, I do have a question since we brought. So I had gone to the Department Head meeting, and that's where I I talked about as the, as I'm changing things, that departments are being aware of it. And I'm emailing them. So this is another effort to, to collaboration and transparency, where we're going to create the shared folder so departments can see what's coming down the pipe, what's changing, efficiencies, making things better. So my question would be is, I mean, the the plan was to have the departments, but I didn't know if anybody on council also wanted to be able to kind of see what's happening. Because we're still in the process of creating that folder. So I could talk to IT and see if you guys want it to be added to it.
I think it wouldn't hurt if the Finance, you know, somebody from the Finance Committee was on there. Is there any? Yeah, I was going to say, the chair, so it's going to come to me. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a good step for transparency.
Yeah, and that way, I feel if people have questions about it, or gives them an opportunity to come to us as we're developing the policies and procedures for either like feedback or concerns or things like that. And it's not just, again, presented to them. So that's the hope.
Yeah. Yeah, just send me an email, and I'll, I'll come over, and we'll work on that however I I can help.
Okay.
We do have claims on the agenda tonight. I think with me becoming the Finance Committee Chair, some wires got crossed. We don't have copies of the claims right now, so we'll address those at our next meeting. Is there any other business to discuss?
Sure. The, in the past, we had talked about working towards like a, like a debt service roll-up and in thinking about kind of like the ongoing, like, cash-on-hands. And and Mary had talked about the, I think there were a couple, there was, there was like sort of a percentage of operating expenses in terms of, you know, having like, say, a month in the, in the piggy bank for a rainy day, always making sure we have that month coverage. Secondary to that was kind of a configuration of like a debt service coverage. But a a recent conversation with one of the department heads, they they talked about kind of the, the, let's say, at the end of a a year, certain vendors will have a sale to try to move products before, you know, the, they close out their their fiscal year. So the, I guess the category I just want to at least put on your radar is like maybe opportunistic purchasing? Or like, you know, when when advantageous opportunities, a little bit of a a buffer in there for that. That just struck me as like a, you know, kind of a category we hadn't talked about in that yet, and wanted to put that on your radar. So for example, if certain equipment is, you know, vastly discounted in December, we could, you know, strike while the iron's hot, so to speak. That's all. Just wanted to submit that for your consideration.
No, I think that'll be good as we start working on the budget. The the departments may be looking to see like if they've got any equipment that's expiring soon or in the near future. Maybe we can use those as like, look for those those sales or discounts.
Yeah, exactly.
And and also, Mr. More, our, our intention is to use the V, the VIP analytics for our next budget for 2026, which the Finance Committee will be, I guess, educated on, a good way to put it. And I think that will give us some more clarity and transparency when we're, we're looking at that. And that's something that, as we move forward here, in the next couple of months, we'd like to bring that to the committee. Put that up on the, on the screen here. We can go over it together.
Thanks, sir. Any other new business or any other discussion? All right, I'll call the meeting to, or I'll, during the meeting.
Thank you.